Thank you. So I'd now like to call to order this committee, the whole meeting of February 27th, 2025. At this point in time, I'll put out a call. Are there any declarations of interest? See none, we'll move on. We have business arising from the minutes. There, there is an item that was published, item three A. However, council body is not able to, uh, to move that motion today. So that will need to be rescheduled to a, uh, to the March 13th meeting instead. As he is not here to serve, uh, to move the motion that he had served at the previous meeting. So with that, we will move down to delegations. We actually don't have any. So we can move on to determination of items requiring separate discussion. And the items are listed in the consent agenda. And, um, Madam CAO, uh, you and I had talked that, that we should pull six B, just so we can provide a bit of an update in terms of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. Are there any other items listed in section six that need to be pulled? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So Madam Clerk will do this, this motion first, and then we'll go back to sixty. At the end, okay, thank you. So it's moved that, it's recommended that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May ask for a mover in a second or, thank you. We'll do move by Counselor Nielsen and seconded by Counselor McQueen. Any discussion on receiving those? Okay, all those in favor? And that motion is carried, thank you. That allows us to move down to section seven, which is items for direction and discussion. So at this point in time, we'll, we'll have a look at item seven A, and we'll hear from Director Spicer on this, but I'll look for a mover in a second or first, that the Budget and Finance Committee minutes of dated February 20th, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. Number one, that Counselor Eccles be nominated for nominated Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee for 2025. Number two, that Counselor Milne be nominated for the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee of 2025. And number three, that Counselor Eccles be elected as Vice Chair of the Budget and Committee, Budget and Finance Committee of 2025. That the report FRBFC 0225 regarding Ontario Regulation 284/09-2025 budget be received for information. And five, that report FRBFC 0325 regarding the 2025 Budget and Finance Committee Proposed Work Plan be received for information. And contained within the minutes, uh, it is noted that, uh, after the first two that were put forward, that, uh, the Deputy Warden Milne will be the Chair for this year and Counselor Eccles, as noted, is the Vice Chair. So with that then, I'll look for a mover in a second or, okay, thank you. I'm, I'm going to make sure I'm looking this direction. So I'm, I'm going to take Counselor Mackey and then I'll, uh, it's moving and then, uh, Counselor Dickerson, uh, seconding. And with that, it's on the floor for discussion, any discussion? Okay, so, uh, maybe we'll hear from Director Spicer first and then we'll come back to those questions. Director Spicer?
Thank you through you, Madam Warden. So as mentioned, we had the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. We had Financial Analyst Amanda Brooks present the annual report for compliance with Ontario Regulation 28409. So a report to council is required if a municipality doesn't budget for amortization post employment benefits, solid waste, post closure and post closure costs. And the first two are the ones that apply to Gray. What that does is it looks to inform council whether levy funding and transfers to reserve for capital are at least as much as the annual amortization. And so of course amortization is based on history and our budget is looking at the replacement cost into the future. The 2025 proposed work plan for the committee was reviewed with discussion on topics scheduled for each meeting and the timelines. Provided a verbal update on the 2024 audit. It's scheduled to begin April 7th and anticipated to take three weeks. We discussed what goes into preparing for the audit is what the audit, as well as what the auditors look for. We also discussed, um, the requirements, uh, for what we have to do as staff, um, in maintaining trust accounts for long-term care. And committee suggested this would be a beneficial topic to include at a future long-term care committee management meeting. The tenure capital process was discussed. Committee said that having an understanding of how staff develops the forecast would be helpful. So over the course of this year, departments with significant capital spending such as transportation, housing, long-term care, IT, ECDV and planning will attend committee to discuss their processes. Deputy Treasurer Sue Murray presented a demo of open book platform. So that's based on the budget software implemented in 2024. That's called Acquastica. Uh, it's still in draft. Committee is going to be able to review and provide some feedback. Uh, the 2024 meeting structure was reviewed and we had discussion on whether extended meeting times were required and whether added dates would be needed, uh, later in the year when we get into, uh, reviewing the 2026 draft budget. As a result, in October and November, meeting length has since been extended and additional dates will be discussed in September. And we also introduced Garrett Reed, who's been with us since 2021. He's been, uh, promoted into a new position as manager of accounting. And that's my update.
Thank you very much, Director Spicer. So I did see two hands go up, so I'll go to Counselor Nielsen first and then over to the sun.
Thank you very much, Warden, much stuff. Um, just more of a comment, I, I appreciated the minutes and I appreciate this format where we're going to have a bit more of a discussion on some of the minutes we can fully understand. Um, I just want to kind of reiterate a comment I made when we were discussing the committee change. There have been, some of the Budget and Finance Committee meetings have been able to be streamlined. They were held in, in this space. Some of the meetings are held in the bay room, which can't be streamed. I'm just wondering if we can try to strive for some consistency there. Um, Budget and Finance is one where I'm sure every member of the committee is interested in knowing and understanding the discussions. I'm just trying to emphasize if we can have consistency in the fact that these ones can be recorded and streamed live on YouTube so that our residents and ourselves can understand them.
Okay, thank you. I'll look to the clerk if there's any comments on that.
Thank you and through you, thank you for the question. This is something that staff will be looking at, um, shortly, um, in terms of discussing what meetings we have staffing availability to stream and, and resources for their rooms. So that's something that, um, we will be having conversation on in the future.
Thank you. And there was a question, there was a hand that had been raised earlier over on this side. Maybe, maybe it's been answered by the presentation, thank you. Okay, nothing online. All right, thank you very much, Director Spicer. So in that case then, with no further hands going up, I'll call for the, the vote, all those in favor. And that is carried, thank you. Next, we'll move on to item seven B. It's recommended that the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee Minutes dated February 12th, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. Number one, that Member Catherine Schultz be elected as the Chair of the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for 2025. Number two, that Gray Highlands 2024 Progress Report on the 2023 to 2027 Multi-Year Accessibility Plan be presented to Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for review and comment. Number three, that the report, uh, Stoddart Hall Accessibility Project be received and that Gray County, that the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee provide input or consideration for the installation of accessible extension slash washrooms. And number four, that can, in consideration of the staff report of the West Gray Durham Lions Durham Community Centre renovation projects, the committee receives the report for review and comment. And, uh, look for a mover in a second or before we go to the clerk, thank you. Moved by Counselor Greg, seconded by, uh, Counselor Dobree. And with that, we will look to the clerk for comment.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. So the first, um, item from the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee Minutes was the election of the Chair, um, that is Catherine Schultz for the 2025 year. Um, the second item the committee discussed was the, um, in relation to the, uh, 2025 Progress Report on the multi-year accessibility plan for Gray Highlands. The, um, staff report highlighted items that were accomplished that align with the five-year, um, accessibility plan. There were items around information and communication standards, employment standards, transportation standards and design of public spaces. The next item the committee considered for review and comment was in relation to the Stoddart Hall addition of accessible washrooms and the inclusion of an accessible ramp that would provide access to the washrooms on the upper and lower levels, as well as braille features and signage. The committee raised points about the surface material of the ramp and the width of the accessible spaces. The municipality of West Gray is undertaking two projects at the Durham Community Centre. The first will be installing grab bars in the women's washroom and then kitchen improvements, including, um, replacing the surface of the island in the kitchen and splitting the island into two separate workstations because it is quite long, making it difficult to move around the kitchen effectively. So there will be an aisle in between those, uh, two workstations going forward. The committee provided feedback on a proposed grab bar location to assist with space limitations in the washroom and a suggestion for hinge bars to be used. Resources were also shared on the accessible design, um, for the built environment, which is a free resource and tool containing requirements for making buildings accessible. That's available online to be downloaded for anyone to use if they wish. Um, Grayroot staff also were seeking, um, feedback and input from the membership and to provide a quote for what they hope for, for the future as in addition to the hope section of the gallery at Grayroots. That's all the update I have.
Thank you, any questions? Not seeing any hand, oh, yes, I do, that will go to Counselor Eccles.
Uh, there's a, just a couple of, uh, points in there under the Stoddart Hall. Is that going to be changed in the minutes? Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the clerk responded, yes. Any other questions? Okay, then that case, then I'll call the vote, all those in favor. And that motion is carried, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll move on to seven C. It's recommended that report PSRCW 0225 regarding the potential acquisition of land from the municipal, municipality of Gray Highlands for the construction of a new paramedic base be received and that staff be directed to work with the municipality of Gray Highlands to acquire approximately point five one hectares or one point two six acres of land, land municipally known as four nine four one four zero Gray Road Two in Feversham, legally described as part of lot 15 concession eight Osprey being part of PIN 3722620063 in the former township of Osprey, municipality of Gray Highlands, and that the land acquisition be conditional on the title search and preliminary site investigations being completed for the subject lands and that staff be directed to retain the services of a surveyor and consultants to complete the necessary plans and studies to complete the land transfer as well as to complete the design specification, to finalize the tender to be released, to construct the new base and that all costs associated with the land transfer, the site investigations and services required to complete the design specifications and tender be funded as per the 2025 budget and that staff proceed prior to council approval as per section, uh, proceed prior to council approval as per section 26.6B of the procedural bylaw and that the bylaw be presented for council's consideration at a future date to authorize the acquisition of lands. May ask for a mover in a second, that's moved by Deputy Warden Milne, seconded by Counselor Patterson. It's now on the floor for discussion and we'll begin with, uh, the Deputy CAO and then we'll hear from Director McNabb as well.
Great, thank you and good morning, everyone. Um, we're just trying to get the presentation up here on the screen. No. Thank you. So this report recommends the potential acquisitional lands from the municipality Gray Highlands for the construction of the new Feversham Paramedic Base. Next slide, please. The proposed new paramedic base in Feversham is, is one of the bases that, uh, is proposed as part of the comprehensive deployment review. These new bases are part of the overall service enhancements that will ensure that paramedic services can meet Gray County's, uh, growing demands and sustain current service levels up to 2033. Following the design and start of the construction of the first new paramedic base in, in the town of Durham, staff began investigations for the new paramedic base in the Feversham area, which is the second base to be constructed. Investigations determined that the ideal location for the new Feversham base would be located with direct access off of Gray Road Two and in close proximity to the settlement area of Feversham, as well as in close proximity to Gray Road Four. Uh, when we start looking for properties, we first start by looking at properties that either the county owns or the local municipality owns. Next slide, please. So the subject lands as shown, uh, on the map on the screen are described as part of, uh, four nine four one four zero Gray Road Two. And these lands, uh, may be familiar to County Council in that they are previously owned by Gray County and were transferred to Gray Highlands in 2021. At that time, Gray County didn't need the property. Uh, however, Gray Highlands still required the property to store, uh, sand and salt for winter maintenance purposes. The proposal would be to acquire a portion of lands back from the new, uh, from Gray Highlands for the new paramedic base, while Gray Highlands still retaining the portion of lands that contains a salt and sand dome. The recommendation is that county staff would work with Gray Highlands staff to acquire a portion of lands back at no cost to the county or the municipality. The only costs associated with the land transfer would be, other than any survey and legal costs associated with the land transfer, and that will be funded from the approved project budget. Gray Highlands would still retain, as I've mentioned, the, the portion of lands that contains that dome. It's our understanding that Gray Highlands, uh, staff discussed this, uh, land transfer with council. Council generally supportive of working with the county to transfer these lands to support the new Feversham base. Constructing a new paramedic base at this location will provide obviously additional emergency response coverage to this part of the county, which benefits residents who live in close proximity to this location. Uh, next slide, please. The Feversham base, uh, build is included in the 2025 approved budget with a construction start date to commence this year. The total cost for the new Feversham base, including land acquisition costs, consulting fees and construction costs is estimated at 1.6 million dollars to be funded by DeVenture. And this slide on the screen here shows a design concept for the proposed new Feversham base. The base design is different than the Durham base as the Durham base required additional storage as well as an additional bay from an operations perspective, just given the central location of the Durham base to the overall county. We anticipate that the remaining new bases to be constructed in Feversham, Ayton, Thornbury and Cobble Beach would mimic the design that's shown on the screen here. Next slide, please. So this slide shows a draft floor plan of the Feversham base and the goal is to create efficient and effective purpose-built bases that will better meet the needs of staff and facilitate better response times. Energy efficiency considerations will also be considered as part of, uh, uh, this base and have been also incorporated into the Durham base as well as subsequent bases. This will ensure that ongoing utility costs are minimized, ensure that the county's buildings are on track to be net zero by 2045 as per the approved, uh, Going Green and Gray Climate Change Action Plan. Similar to the Durham base, uh, staff will look for grant funding opportunities, uh, to add further energy efficiencies, uh, to the design while still staying within the proposed budget. Preliminary discussions have occurred with planning and transportation services. The lands are designated as agriculture in the county official plan and Gray Highlands official planned. And the lands are also within aggregate resource area. Both OPs permit lock creation for infrastructure of, for public use purposes. The lands are zoned as institutional in the Gray Highland zoning bylaw, which permits municipal buildings. All the other, uh, yard and lock coverage requirements associated with the institutional zone can be met. There will be a site application that's required, uh, from Gray Highlands and we can assure that any compatibility matters with surrounding land uses can be addressed by looking at things like tree buffers or fencing and will work with those neighboring landowners to mitigate any potential impacts. Next slide, please. Like the Durham base, staff recommend taking what's called a hybrid design-build approach. A design-build contract is a single agreement between the owner and the contractor and covers the responsibilities associated with the design as well as the construction phase of the project. Internal staff, uh, primarily Aaron Whitney from, from our housing department, uh, will prepare the architectural design drawings and will have those reviewed and stamped by a structural engineer. The county would also retain an engineering consultant to prepare the design for the site services. The site will require a well, a septic and there would be stormwater design required as well. The contractor would be responsible for designing the mechanical, electrical aspects of the build and we'd be obviously responsible for delivering the project according to the owner's design specifications and budget. This, this base, similar to the Durham base, it's a fairly straightforward build. Uh, the site is generally flat, it's a greenfield property. Um, and we think it's ready to go from a construction perspective, so that's all very positive. Following the completion of the preliminary site investigations and design specs, staff would finalize and release the tender package and bring back the tender results to council to award the contract. Next step, squeeze. In terms of next steps, uh, so staff would enter into an access agreement with Gray Highlands to conduct preliminary site investigations and consulting work. We would then hire an engineering consultant to conduct, uh, preliminary site investigations, including a servicing study, soils, geotech analysis, an environmental site assessment and an archaeological assessment. The same engineering consultant would assist with finalizing the service design and stormwater design. We will also hire a surveyor to prepare a reference plan required to transfer the lands. Uh, staff would prepare an agreement of purchase and sale and bring forward a bylaw to council to authorize the final transfer of the base lands. Again, as, as noted, a site application will be prepared and we'll submit that to Gray Highlands, followed by a building permit application. Uh, we're, we'll prepare the tender package and release that as noted and bring back a, a report to award that contract and then the cost for all these, all the site investigations, the legal fees, the survey work, uh, additional studies would be funded through the approved budget for this project. Next slide. So that's just covers the Feversham base in terms of what we're proposing in terms of moving forward. We also wanted to make council aware of another base that's, uh, being currently explored that wasn't identified in the deployment view. We wanted to at least provide some initial information for council to be aware of this and then bring back a subsequent staff report once we've done some further investigations. So the current Dundalk base, uh, is located within a shared facility with the Dundalk Fire Department. And based on growth and development that we've seen of, say, occur in the Dundalk area, the Dundalk Fire Department has indicated that they may require the entire building to support, uh, their future operations. Based on this, paramedic staff are currently investigating options to potentially relocate the Dundalk paramedic base. So one option that is being explored is to renovate a portion of the Transportation Services Depot in Dundalk to house the relocated paramedic base. Transportation staff have indicated that once the new Patrol D has been constructed, they would likely only need one to two bays in the Dundalk depot, which leaves two to three bays that can be renovated and used for the paramedic base. The hope is that there will be sufficient remaining budget room in both the Durham paramedic base project budget and this Feversham base project to fund the Dundalk renovations. This would result in staying with the amount budgeted to borrow through DeVenture for all three projects. And next slide, please. So this is a picture of the Dundalk depot. As you can see, there's currently five bays, uh, in, in that building. So as noted, uh, once the Patrol D is built, um, transportation, through discussions with Pat and his team, think that one to two bays may be required. So the remaining three bays could be renovated potentially for the paramedic base. So again, staff are still in the process of investigating this potential option. We'll bring back a further staff report to council once we've, uh, once we've done those investigations. So the recommendation at this stage is primarily again focused on the Feversham base and Madam Warden already read that motion, so I'll repeat it. Um, so the motion there is on the screen for, for committee's, uh, consideration.
Thank you, Deputy CAO and, uh, Director McNabb is also available for, for addressing any comments or questions that come from council members. Um, so with that, we'll begin over here with Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Randy, for your report. Just want to sort of give an overall comment that it's good to see this is moving forward as we know this is an undersurfaced area. Um, we'll say that I know there has been a few incidents that maybe it comes to people's health. Timing is, is, is the essence. And also I think with regards to Simcoe County and to the east, with regards to that borderline, I think this will probably help that a little bit as well. But just as far as the site, um, I think we were gracious to receive it from the county a few years back and, uh, and you have a lot of conditions to receive it back. But anyway, the site, I think at one time was, it was excavated and it's a little old. And I, I'm sure you're quite aware of it, so as far as archaeological, it probably is nothing left. But it is a bit of a low, so I don't know if the stormwater or that type of thing. Mind you, our, our building that we had to rebuild, I think it was 841,000 for a new salt, salt dome is a little low too, so I guess you have to sort of pour the light in. But it seems to be lower because I think at one time it was excavated or something, like a small gravel pit or something like that. So anyway, I'll leave it at that, I'm sure you guys are having good hands, but, uh, yeah, we'd be good to see.
Thank you very much, and we'll go to Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Warden Mattressaw. So I'm just wondering, and maybe it was in the deployment review and I don't recall, Randy, but is there a formula in terms of, you know, growth related to the need for an extra paramedic bay? Is it so many homes, then you require another, um, paramedic bay or another ambulance in that area? Thank you.
Good morning, council. Uh, when the comprehensive deployment review was done, what they did is they looked at the, uh, overall increase of coal volume of 5.8% per year and then looking at that over 10 years and then matching that with resources. So they, they say in the next 10 years, and we have a report coming next time, that this 5.8 will end up being, uh, 68% increase over the next 10 years. We're averaging over the last three years, 5.6, so we're fairly close to those numbers. And, uh, what they did is they, they more or less came up with the number, the amount of resources to put in to the service. And, uh, what they did is kind of balanced out, uh, you know, where, where to put those services. You could see this year are our busiest areas, or sorry, 2024, uh, we put a car in, in Owens Town and in, uh, in Hanover where our busiest areas are. But then we're balancing out the reality, trying to spread out some of those response times as well by adding resources in areas like, uh, like Feversham. And then eventually when, uh, we talked about adding the bases, it will be, uh, because we needed places to put the ambulances, we're spreading out some of those areas even to Ayton and, uh, uh, Thornbury and Cobble Beach, uh, so it is a balance. So they, they, they made a recommendation based upon the number of vehicles. And then, uh, we, we further went, uh, into that by adding additional bases outside of the traditional eight that we had when we started.
Okay, thank you very much, and we do have, you maybe don't want to go too far. Uh, we've got another question, uh, from Counselor Boarden, y'all.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden, through you, a message, a question for Randy, it's a simple question. Um, for clarity purposes, uh, the land was Gray County, then it was Gray Highlands. So a portion, so there'll be, the ownership will be a portion still remain by Gray Highlands and the other portion will be, I guess, owned, to use the word, uh, by Gray County. So that we're severing this piece of property for two ownership, just for, just for clarity, is that correct, Randy?
Through you, Warden, yes, that's, that's exactly what is being proposed is that we'll, we'll survey that part of the property, uh, and, and do a land transfer. So those, that north portion would then become property of Gray County. The remaining portion that contains the current salt sand dome, uh, would remain with Gray Highlands.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have another question here from in the chambers, so we'll go to Counselor Eccles.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden, and through you and whether it's Randy, but it's probably more towards Kevin, uh, Director McNapp. We are building more paramedic services to get the service closer to resident. to residents and to recognize the growth and whatnot that we have in the residency. Are these, are we taking into consideration uh, from the Ministry of Health closing down rural hospitals and where that plays into the fact that transportation from these uh, services to where we're going to be taking anybody by ambulance to a hospital? As we build out to get closer and more response, less response time, obviously. The Ministry of Health continues to close hospitals or close hospital access. How do we coordinate that with where we're building our new paramedic services? Or as Counselor Nielsen has said, today, after we vote, that will be all cured by uh, how we vote today and who ends up in Queens Park and is running the Ministry of Health? That's a pretty tough question, but I know you can answer it.
Okay, so thank you very much. Um, we'll we'll look for a response from staff within the context of this report. Thank you.
Yeah, that that is a tough question. What, but what we do look at is really primarily response times to get to the calls, you know, as quickly as possible. So uh, by adding resources, uh, allows us to be available when the next call comes in. Uh, by spreading out our resources uh, to the best of our ability, shortens those windows of response time. Our, 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 what we look at is really like an eight, ten and fifteen minute response. They obviously you want to get there as quickly as possible. But uh, eight, eight minutes is is really the the goal with a goal in an urban area and fifteen minutes across the county. Outside of that, nine times out of ten. So that that's how we focus the response time. Look at, as far as where hospitals go, uh, we, it's hard to determine that. It's really what response.
Um, then to follow on um, to Kevin's point, um, in Gray County, and Kevin has spoken to this, I think, in earlier reports. We adjust our resources all the time based on where the right calls coming here, you're moving ambulances around to backfill them. Maybe Kevin, you want to talk about what happens when you don't, when you don't have bases in the right places, um, what happens to people that have been moved around or what happens with that movement and where do ambulances end up sitting and waiting so that they're close to a call?
Yeah, so uh, for us, we have a deployment plan that speaks clearly, you know, with the number of vehicles uh, in 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 uh, in the system where they would stage. And uh, right now it's just they have eight bases. So as long as there's uh, at least eight vehicles available, they sit at one of each base. And then outside of that, if there, if there's a call in Durham and we're down to seven vehicles, we'll sit now and park. So we split the difference. And the idea again is back to, you know, most of the calls are in the urban areas. So we, that's where we stage the vehicles. And then when we can't have coverage in those urban areas, then we split the difference as much as we can, trying to keep within that fifteen minute window. And it's all day long. But there's times in the county where we're down to two or three vehicles. And then, and then, you know, sometimes it could be a twenty, thirty minute response. And then from there, you're just, you know, you're just hoping another call doesn't come in. But a- as a supervisor or manager, we, we look at the calls that haven't happened yet. Because we, we know the resource is being sent to the one that's already there, but it's like, what happens? We don't know where the next call is coming in. So you need to build a plan for that in the moment.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go to Deputy Warden Mill next, and then we'll go to Counsel Mackey after that.
Hey, Madam Warden. Um, just to go to the Dundalk piece of that report, uh, I just want to clarify, it says in there that the transportation services in Southgate may need that extra bay. I don't want to speak for uh, the fire department in Dundalk, but I can assure you, they will need that bay. And I truly appreciate Kevin's and and other staff, uh, their flexibility to discuss options of how we can accommodate everybody in a timely manner. And so I just wanted to make that distinction that they will need that, or they do need that extra bay because they've got more equipment there than they've got doors. So with the growth in Dundalk, we need that capacity there. So again, I want to say I appreciate Kevin's ability to work with us. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Counsel Mackey.
Thank you, Warden Mattressoff. Good morning, County Council. Kevin, thanks very much. In the design, I saw wellness rooms. And it's great to see that that recognition is there to support our paramedics. Can you just explain to us the, how the studies have shown the benefits of wellness rooms, please?
There, there's multiple functions to that room. It's a room that, you know, for us, quiet, meditated, calming, place to go after calls, uh, to rest, you know, to think, you know, to reflect. Uh, it's a place that you can meet privately with a peer support member. Um, so they are quite beneficial as having a place that people can go. And also, you know, as far as having like light fitness equipment where they can exercise and stretch and stuff like that afterwards as well. So it's a dedicated spot through, and then now they'll be located throughout the county. That if somebody needs to meet with a peer support, which is a very important part of our program as far as uh, debriefing after a call, that they'll be available from there.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any further hands. So we'll go over to Counsel Greg.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, uh, this question be to Randy. Uh, it just has to do with uh, essentially severing that that land. Do we hold ourselves to the exact same standard in terms of process and what uh, is appropriate? Uh, you know, I just look at the the surrounding rural uses. If one of those farmers wanted to uh, sever off a property and construct a house, I want to just be confident we're acting in no different way and applying uh, the same rules we would to the private landowners.
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for that question. Um, as noted, the the zoning is institutional, which would permit a building of of this nature. We will be required, uh, going through a site plan application, which would be very similar to uh, uh, another building that's non-county or non-municipal related. Um, through that process, we're hoping to work with some of those surrounding uh, property owners uh, to ensure that any potential impacts can be mitigated. And speaking with Kevin from an operations perspective, uh, we have bases already that are within residential areas uh, and and uh, throughout the county. And so with, from an operation perspective, you know, they're very respectful in terms of noting that especially during the evening hours and late hours, uh, to not have the sirens on and other things, uh, um, and only use those uh, when, when necessary. Um, so trying to make sure that from an operations perspective, whether or not we want to build some of that language right in the site plan agreement to ensure that any potential impacts are mitigated. So we are holding ourselves to the same standard and that, and that we'll be going through a site plan application very similar to what others would, would be required to do.
And next we'll go to Counsel Dobrine.
Thank you. And through you to Randy, uh, just follow up on that. Was consideration ever given to just leasing the land back?
So that is always an option. Um, we are Craig Leath paramedic base is, um, we currently have a lease arrangement with Town of Blue Mountains. Long-term lease arrangement uh, for uh, sharing the property or sharing the space uh, with with Blue Mountains Fire Department in this case. Um, so that's another option that can be pursued if if, for whatever reason. Um, uh, consent or a severance is not possible for this property. Based on all the provisions that are in both the official plans for the county as well as Gray Highlands, uh, we think there is a path forward to to do the actual land transfer. But a land lease option is is also a potential option if that is required.
Okay. Looking for any further hands. Not seen any. Therefore, I think we're ready to call that vote. All those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. We have one more report to have a look at. Uh, it's recommended that County Count, County Council receive report C S R C W zero two twenty-five for information. May I ask for a mover in a second, or? Thank you. Moved by Council, moved by Counsel Carlton, seconded by Counsel McKay, and we have Ms. Cockrell to address this. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm here today to provide an update on our progress thus far with our directed growth plan within the Seawald system for um, the province of Ontario's plan to increase licensed childcare spaces. Um, the system has been in place for two and a half, almost three years now. And within that time, we have seen a lot of great improvements, a lot of growth, but we are also experiencing some challenges. Um, progress to date would be, uh, we've initially received five hundred and four spaces with some discussions with the province. That number was increased to six hundred and forty-four spaces. Within three years, we have seen an increase of five hundred and sixteen licensed spaces eligible for the Seawald financial assistance, which is a great relief to many families in our community. Uh, we've included some charts um, for your review or for your reference. Um, you can see that we have seen good growth in our toddler and preschool spaces. So that would support the children who are eighteen months up until they start kindergarten. And then we've also seen some kindergarten space improvement as well. Um, a target achievement. So as we have pardon me, within the six hundred and forty-four spaces allocated to us, we're at ninety percent completion already. Our allocation has been um, committed to with other projects for twenty twenty-six. So we don't have any concerns that we will meet those targets um, within Gray County, which is great news. We are also maintaining the provincial hospice thresholds. The province requires that our for-profit and nonprofit ratio is seventy percent nonprofit and thirty percent for-profit. And currently we're sitting at seventy-eight and twenty-two. So despite the excellent growth that we've seen, we are seeing some pressures. Um, despite those increased spaces, our operators are still reporting over two thousand children on their wait lists. We do want to note that some children could be on more than one waitlist. But regardless, that would still be a very high number for us to try to accommodate. Um, excuse me. With the announcement of the new benchmark funding formula last year, we had three existing operators um, that had not opted into the Seawald system request to enroll. Unfortunately, due to space considerations and funding applications, we were only able to enroll two of those sites. The remaining four have been included in a report to the province requesting funding and space allocations to support that enrollment. Um, since the writing of this report, I've also had another operator that had closed during COVID reach out to me asking to enroll um, to reopen. And we have three centers that have reached out this month alone saying they have the capacity to expand, that we cannot approve at this time due to space and funding restraints. Uh, additionally, we also have eleven centers in other municipalities that would like to expand into Gray County as well, two of which feel they could be up and running this year. So our actions I have been, that we have advised the province of these pressures. We have continued to maintain communication with those who are interested. And we continue to work with OMSA and our neighboring partners to advocate for additional spaces in an effort to support these um, pressures that our operators are feeling. Uh, the space allocation takes into consideration the annual funding provided by the province, but expansion outside of the province, provincial allocation would require levy contribution. I'm happy to take questions about our practical growth plan.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin over here with the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Tara, for the report. Um, going back to what Savannah said earlier in her report, uh, we're seeing more of a balancing in the labor market. Uh, in in the past, there's certainly been uh, more spaces than could be provided because of those labor constraints. Are we seeing that those kinds of pressures are starting to even up so that we can actually em- employ people to provide those spaces? Thank you.
Thank you for the question through you, Warden. Um, we are seeing some centers that have been able to stabilize their staff and increase their staff. Not all of those staff are qualified registered early childhood educators, but they do need the qualifications to support the expansion that they have been able to do within their existing licenses. So I would say yes, some centers have been able to see an increase in that staff, which has been nice to see.
Okay, we'll go to Counsel Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Mattressoff. And um, Deputy Warden Mill did speak to my main topic, which is going to be whether or not we're able to staff with positions and seeing the growth. But with the sites that are outside of Gray County that are looking to move into um, our area, um, there are nonprofits, sorry, there are profit centers that are not enrolled in the Quelk. Um, and they would be welcome to open up shop and operate. There's no restrictions on them. We're just talking about sites that may be not able to operate because of funding model for the Quelk system doesn't exist. And so um, from the sites that are uh, interested in moving to our area, or any of those, the profit centers that are looking to not be in Quelk or strictly the ones that are interested in that Quelk system?
Through you, Madam Warden. Um, that is an excellent point. Um, all of the centers that have reached out to us do want to be enrolled in the Seawald system.
Okay, thank you. Looking, and we'll go to the C A O.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Um, Tara, just a couple of things for the benefit of council. Um, so it's the current funding agreement and the cap on the available funding that's preventing willing sen- centers from being able to offer more spaces. We believe that this potentially there are staff there to staff spaces if the funding was available to allow the centers to see. When does the Seawald funding agreement between the province and the federal government, when is that up for renegotiation?
Um, currently, we're anticipating that for twenty twenty-six will be the last funding year um, in in the current agreement. And then with some unknowns of future elections, we're not sure when that will go after that at this time.
And and the one other thing, Tara, maybe you can help people to understand. Under Seawalk, what do you pay for a toddler space? And what do you, what are you likely to pay a private provider? What's the difference in the cost to family?
Great. Through you, Warden. Um, currently within the Seawalk system, a toddler space, no family would pay more than twenty-two dollars. The same would be for preschool and infants. Private rates for infants would range anywhere from fifty to seventy dollars a day. Preschool would be anywhere from forty-five up to sixty-five dollars a day. So um, definitely huge savings for our programs as well.
Are you aware of any service providers that have moved towards putting a levy contribution towards this situation?
I don't, I have not heard of any at this time. Um, we do have an OMSA meeting this afternoon, so I can certainly put that question forward.
Thank you. We'll go to Counsel Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Tara, is there any means testing done to be to access these beds? Can any, you know, financial level access these beds? My understanding was, you know, someone making two hundred thousand dollars would have access to these beds. Is that accurate?
Sorry, through you, Warden. Um, that's correct. There is, it is a universal program, so there is no financial component to those accessing the Seawalk system. We still do have our fee subsidy program for families that are eligible that aren't able to pay that twenty-two, twenty-two dollars a day. We can still support them. Otherwise, all of the systems, it would be whoever can register for the space is welcome to use it.
I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up?
So I'm just wondering how many needy families are not able to access these beds because there's others that probably could afford to pay the full shot or using them. Has that been looked at at all? I mean, the programs there for specific families to be able to allow them to continue to work and not be under undue hardship, but it just seems to be a loophole in this program that uh, doesn't seem fair. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we have certainly identified that with the province as a, as a constraint and a concern. We want to certainly support those families who are looking to work and maintain um, a lifestyle for their families. We have identified that we do not have any as, any sorry, any access to financial income for families that are not part of the subsidy. We don't have authorization to access that. So there's no way for us to means test at this time. But we have certainly put that forward to the province as well.
One other point of clarity then, Tara, for the people that are in the, in the private, with a private provider, the fees that you pay are, that's also something that you can claim on your income tax, correct?
Yes. If they may just expand on that, um, we have been, we have had a restriction implemented that if your program is not enrolled in the Seawalk system, the existing subsidy families may continue to use there, but we are not permitted to enroll anyone else who's eligible for fee subsidy in those programs, even if they had space because they are not enrolled in the Seawalk system.
Counselor, no, okay. Uh, any other questions then? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Cockrell, for navigating through that information for us. I'll call the vote then, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. At this point in time, we can return to item six B and, uh, CAO Windgrove, if you would like to, um, provide us with some comparison with the Ontario. Oh, let me get the motion on the floor for you, and then we can look at our Western Ontario Wardens Caucus information. Uh, so with that, it's recommended that the correspondence from the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus regarding support for Canadian and Ontario governments negotiations with the US government on trade tariffs be received for information. It's moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor McKay. It's on the floor for discussion. CAO.
Thanks, Madam Warden. So just to, uh, to draw council's attention to the fact that, um, very similar to the information provided by the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, um, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, which is the group that we're a member of, did provide a media release on February eleventh indicating, um, their strong support for the government of Ontario and the government of Canada as they worked to navigate the challenges posed by tariffs and other trade restrictions. Um, Western Wardens recognizes that these barriers create significant challenges for industries that are vital to our region's economic stability, job creation, and long-term prosperity. And, uh, the release goes on to talk about the importance of, um, buying local, working together and supporting, uh, local suppliers and local industries. I wanted to say that Savannah and her team have been involved in the ongoing discussions with their colleagues across uh, Western Ontario region as some of those economic development professionals, you know, bring their knowledge of what's happening on the ground, the challenges, and sometimes the opportunities that they're hearing. Uh, they're bringing that together to a single table to inform the Western Ontario Wardens' response. And then their communications again back to the province and the federal government. So thanks to Savannah and Steve for that. Thanks.
Thank you. And I can also confirm too that on the wider scale, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City's initiative representation will be next week on Capitol Hill uh, for the Great Lakes Day along with the Great Lakes Commission. So that's a very joint effort to be able to, um, to bring, bring forth all of the same kind of similar calls that we have. I imagine a lot of the messaging will be underscoring and supporting what FCN had done earlier by, uh, visiting down to the states to say why it's so important to our municipalities on the Canadian side of the border that we maintain our working relationship in terms of the economic, uh, the, the blue economy as we call it. Okay, great. So with that then, uh, we've got a question. Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. I'm just wondering if anyone can speak to the legislative barriers that may be involved with the province would need to look at. In the memo, it speaks to the legislative barriers that, that may be presented.
Thank you. And I think, um, in the short presentation that we made at the end of the last meeting, we talked about, um, the thresholds that, um, we're subject to based on the interprovincial trade agreements that there, we only have so much leeway in our ability to buy local. For example, who are we inviting to respond to tenders and that? And what's the threshold of that project size? So as we have this broader discussion around, um, moving those interprovincial trade barriers, um, one of the things that, that they're wanting to do is see that legislation as a whole move forward, but also to adjust some of those thresholds. So we have more flexibility in that way in being able to select, um, local businesses and, and Canadian industries as supply to us for goods and services.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, not seen any then. I'll call the vote. All those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. Item eight, we do not have any closed meeting matters, so that allows us to move on to item nine, other business. And we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden and County Council. Just a query or inquiry comment in the sense that our transit is going to come to the end, the end of March. So we will know that there will be a new government tomorrow. And obviously, the original contract is coming to an end. Is it viable for yourself or others to make a delegation to the government, whoever that is, in the near future, to see if there's a possibility of continuing the service from the province? And I throw that out for discussion per point. I know that, um, maybe there's different models that we could look at as well as maybe even from the lower tier to the county and, you know, partnership that way. But I just wondered if it's worth investigating.
Um, thank you. Maybe I'll just start and then hand it over to CAO Windgrove, uh, that indeed, uh, working in partnership with our lower tiers, but also working up within the Western Wardens Caucus too, because we're not the only one that's seen the end of this provincial funding. So the larger the, the challenges, the larger collective that we have, then, then, uh, the more effective communication we can have. But indeed, we don't necessarily need to wait to our delegations for AMO and Roma. There is an opportunity to continue to open dialogue along the way. Um, so with that, I'll look over to CAO Windgrove for further comments.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. Um, I'm sure that many of you have seen the, the social media responses, um, after we provided notice, which we had to do in fairness to our service provider and in fairness to the um, ridership that would be affected by this, we had to give them some time, uh, to make alternate arrangements, um, for themselves. Council's aware, I think that, um, we have put in an application to, um, the OTIF program, which is the follow-on program that the province announced. So GTR, our Great Transit Route was funded through um, the Community Transportation Program. And now, um, the program that they announced in November, um, was the Ontario Transit Infrastructure Fund, OTIF. Um, we did work with our colleagues in Bruce and Dufferin to put an application forward for that. That, um, application was, um, submitted the first week of January. Um, we continue to, to speak with the province, um, around when you ask and how that could play out. As you're aware, the, um, the one, uh, portion of, of the GTR service that remains at this time is the, uh, Dundalk through to Orangeville, since that was a really critical employment route. Both the Gray County and Dufferin County had provided some funding, uh, towards the continuation of that with the hope that, um, we would be successful with an OTIF application that would allow it to continue for the rest of the year. But right now, the funds that Gray County and Dufferin have, have provided will support that portion of the service to run until June. And then after that, the funds will be exhausted. Um, I am hopeful that we'll hear something from the province before that time though, so that we'll be able to move forward together. Um, it's a challenge. The province allocated five million dollars a year to OTIF. When, when you think about what our own program cost, and you think about the whole province being eligible to that, will be very difficult to see a lot of service, um, for that amount of money. So we'll need to be very strategic in what we're asking for. The, um, idea behind the OTIF application was that, um, we wanted to take this current year to be very strategic to understand who were our potential system partners, who's got money in transit right now? And if we pooled some of those funds, could we meet or exceed the service level that's currently being provided? Um, some of our, our nonprofits, home and community support services, as well as SMART, are very challenged, as were we, to meet the demand. And, um, so we have a lot of work ahead of us to try and see our way through this, and the three counties is a huge geography. So I'm trying to think about how you could even get a start to that is, um, something that we're anxious to get started on. And we hope to work with the province on being able to do that.
Okay, uh, excellent question. Uh, if, uh, okay, just, just a brief follow-up. I just want to keep the floor open for any other members that have any other business.
So yeah, just a follow-up. Thank you very much for that, Madam CEO. And I guess the point is, is I know, as I understand, the previous contract, we're limited to charge. There's, there was limitations. So I don't know if there's a possibility of having conversations with the lower tiers, the county, the province to look at it, maybe a new model. Because obviously those that, uh, are using it or are currently using it find it useful. But I thought, I remember the conversation that we were limited to what, like, I look at Scott, Greg over there, Counselor Greg, and, you know, that we're limited to what we could charge because of the, the way that grant was structured. So maybe there's dialogue with the users as well. Because if, you know, you either use it or you lose it, but you may have to pay to keep it going as well. So maybe there's a conversation that could be had of all the, all the beneficiaries of that.
Uh, that's an excellent point. Um, right now, we're, our flat fee fare is not, um, certainly not means tested, but also doesn't take into account the distance that you might be traveling. So some people are able to travel quite a long way for, um, a minimal amount of money. Um, many of the people who go through our surveys and that have told us if it wasn't for GTR, they'd be staying home because there just isn't any other way for them to get from A to B. So again, it's a fine balance there between, um, being fair to everyone that's contributing to the system as, at the same time, ensuring that the people who need a service the most are able to access it. So that's all, I think, part of our analysis that we wanted to do this year.
Okay, and certainly, uh, as we get more information, as we hear about progress on the OTIF application and our work with the counties, et cetera, we can keep this coming back when staff have, have further updates for us. Um, and certainly, one of the, one of the, the key takeaways from the funding that we have done, the process that we have done is, yes, we've tapped into those who need it, you know, and, and we know who they are and we know how to reach out to them. So it is, we've learned a lot from this process and we don't want to, we, we will not, we will not lose sight of everything that we've gathered and learned in order to be able to produce a model that, that could work if we can figure out the best partnership of the funding. Uh, Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Madam Warden. And not to put too much of a point on it, but the current government had every opportunity to extend the funding for this program, and we have made it very clear to them how important this is to our residents. But they chose not to, and here we are.
Thank you. Okay. So, good topic to discuss. We'll look forward to some further progress with that, we hope. Uh, other new business, other business? Not seen any? Okay, I'll put a call out then. Item number ten, are there any notices or motions served? Not seen any hands go up? In that case then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Dobrine and, uh, seconded by Counselor McQueen. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much.